I'll call this meeting to order for Tuesday, October 24th, 2023. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Susan Payne.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dusty Wright.
Here.
Commissioner Sharon McDonald. Commissioner Josh Reardon.
Here.
Commissioner Stephen Burnett.
Here.
Commissioner Kara Melton.
Here.
Commissioner Nick Paul.
Here.
Acting City Manager Stephanie Hernandez. City Attorney Ashley Smith.
Here.
The clerk is present. Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Okay, we are going to start with our invocation given by Pastor Forney of Corinth Baptist, Baptist Church. And our pledge of allegiance is going to be led by Commissioner Carl Mountain.
Amen. Shall we stand? Good evening, my heavenly Father. We thank you for this beautiful day that you've blessed us with. Thank you for the moisture that's coming right now, Lord God. And God, our Father, we lift up our city to you, our commissioners tonight, our mayor, Lord God, that you would grant them wisdom, grant them knowledge, Lord. Lord, let this be a peaceful meeting, Lord. And then, God, our Father, we pray for our police officers who are present, that you would wrap your arms of love and protection around them and keep them as only you can do, Lord God. And not only them, but all of our first responders. Lord, we thank you for who you are in our lives, heavenly Father, and we pray for what's going on in the Middle East right now. We thank you for those hostages that were released. We pray for the release of the remaining, oh God. And Lord, we pray for peace that only you can bring to this arena, oh God. Bless our nation, oh God, before our cause. We are in turmoil right now, Lord. Bless the Republican Party, Lord, strengthen and keep them as only you know how to do, Lord God. Lord, give us peace tonight. Give us understanding of all that will take place in this place. In Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you, Pastor Forney.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for being here. I appreciate it. We are going to move on to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Who was that?
I'll second.
A motion from Commissioner Paul is second, from Commissioner Melton. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, and motion passes seven zero. We're going to flip flop things a little bit. The agenda has our swearing in first, but we're going to start with a proclamation. If I could get Center of Protective Environment, if you're associated with them in any way, please come up. Okay. Oh, that's very great. All right, yeah, we'll go this way. Hello.
Well, she had come.
Well, of course. She's associated with them, right? So, I, as the mayor, have the opportunity and the privilege, often the privilege, of doing a proclamations for certain, to recognize certain things in our city. This one is super important to me. I really believe in what the Center of Protective Environment does. I really believe in their cause. As someone who runs a nonprofit myself, I work very closely with COPE, and I really believe that they make such a huge difference in our city. So I'm honored to be able to do this tonight for you. Whereas domestic violence is a serious problem that affects people of all races, ages, genders, and income levels. And whereas children who grow up in violent homes are believed to be abused and neglected at a higher rate than the national average, and that these children, their development and ability to function well in school can be negatively affected for a lifetime. And whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse. And whereas within the pandemic, many victims were faced the added pressures of increased economic security, increased time in isolation with their abusers, and limited contact with their support networks. And whereas it is important to recognize the compassion and dedication of the individuals who work with the Center of Protective Environment, who provide services to victims of domestic violence, and work to increase public understanding of this significant problem. And whereas recognition of this severe problem creates an opportunity to educate the public on the seriousness of domestic violence and the prevalence of this epidemic in our lives. Now therefore, I, Susan L. Payne, Mayor of the City of Alamogordo, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2023 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Alamogordo, and urge all our citizens to actively participate in the Domestic Violence Awareness Event sponsored by the Center of Protective Environment throughout the month of October 2023. And I know that you just had a great event, but I felt that it was important to, and I did do the proclamation there, but I felt it was important to do it here as well. So I, we just create a bigger awareness, and this is super important. So thank you for that. I appreciate it. This is Veronica Gutierrez. She is the executive director. Executive Director of COPE and a dear friend of mine. I will not tell you how far we go back, but I will tell you that my 30-year-old son that heard his, said that his first-grade teacher is still his favorite teacher to this day. So, there, I said it. Thank you for everything you do. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Stephanie Hernandez, who has some comments for us before we give this very moment.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem Commissioners. I was going to do this in my City Managers Report, but I'm going to go ahead and do it right now because I think it's important that everybody, because I know once you do the swearing-in, they all go back there and they start signing, so I kind of want everybody here. This is more of a shout-out to you all. I want to go through some statistics for our police department. So in four months, we were, we have hired 11 officers, which is super important. Most of them have signed up for five years, so that's going to help stabilize our department, which is big. Chief, by the end of the fiscal year, by the end of the calendar year, I'm sorry, we believe that we'll be in the 50s as officers, which we haven't been in the 50s officer-wise since, I believe it was the late, the last quarter of 2018. So that matters. That's a huge thing. But equally as important is we haven't lost any officers. Of course, we lost Officer Ferguson, and then we had two retirees, Chief Denton and Officer Winrow. They retired. Those are the only three that we've lost. So we've been able to not only add to our force but retain it, and that's, that's a big deal for us. Chief and I have spoken, and we have a goal that we're going to be fully staffed with the budgeted positions by the end of the fiscal year. And that's just, that's a big deal. That's within a year that we were able to do that. And I don't realize, I don't think people realize how important that was. So this is, I know passing the tax wasn't easy. I know it's never something that we want to do, but I do think that it, the intended goal, we're meeting it. And I just want to say, you know, thank you. I think you trusted staff, you trusted the research, and it's showing. And I just kind of want to have everybody thank you and give you guys a round of applause, honestly, because it was a big deal, and we appreciate all seven of you going down that road and putting the trust in staff. And those are the results. We have eight today. That's just, that's outstanding. And so, thank you, guys. Thank you.
Well, thank you too, because it was, sorry, Chief, but it was the, it started out the brainchild, of course, Chief Denton, who's now retired, and has continued. And we have the opportunity to make those things happen, but it wouldn't happen without the phenomenal staff. So thank you as well. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem Commissioners and Acting City Manager. I have the privilege and the honor tonight to introduce eight new officers to, to be sworn in with Judge Overstreet. Four of them come certified, and four of them are trainees. So as I call their name, they'll step up and step before the judge. Travis Jones. Adam Lim. Obed Marte. Jesus Diaz. Our trainee positions, Christopher Padilla. Dylan Sullivan. Nathaniel Darby. And Toby Kerlin.
I do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the State of New Mexico.
Constitution and the laws of New Mexico.
The ordinances of the City of Alamogordo.
The ordinances of the City of Alamogordo.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And according to the law.
And according to the law.
Discharge the duties of the Alamogordo Police Department.
Discharge the duties of the Alamogordo Police Department.
To the best of my abilities to help the government.
To the best of my abilities to help the government.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I don't know how they're going to fit them all back.
I'll give them just a minute. Sorry, I'm giving them a minute. Okay. We are going to move on to public comment. I don't have anybody signed up. So with that, we will move on to the City Managers Report. Did you have anything else?
I just wanted to remind everybody, the joint meeting is on 10/31. And unfortunately, we also have a regular meeting the next day on November 1st that, I don't know if you all remember, but we changed the days from the second and the fourth Tuesday in November, so.
I have a headache thinking about that. That's okay.
And that's it.
That's all right. Okay. All right. And that's it? Okay. So we're going to move on to remarks and inquiries by the City Commission. Do, does anybody have anything?
I do.
Commissioner McDonald?
I just wanted to comment on Dudley School. The work is done inside, and they are inspecting and signing off on it. And so the outside is painted, and we will be moving inside to actually do the painting and work. And I'm really kind of excited because we found out in the last week that the first two rooms of Dudley School was built in 1901, which makes it one of the oldest buildings in the City of Alamogordo. And then they did a bond in 1913 that added the other rooms on in the back. So that was interesting. And when, even though the building is not completed, we are going to put up two Christmas trees in the building, and just to let people know that we are continuing, we're not stopping. And you have Joe Deb and Jonathan Levandowski of the Tulare Rosa Basin Historical Society to thank for that, because they are really putting everything in it. So I appreciate that. And I also wanted to let the City of Alamogordo know that I went out on a ride-along on Sunday afternoon with Sergeant Soto. And I think the training that they are getting to deal with people, you know, in our community, and especially with the people that have mental health conditions, I really saw Sergeant Soto in action, talking to someone, and they actually got them to go to the hospital and get help. And I thought that was amazing because when they get, they're not just getting on the force just to get the money, but they're going through the process of getting certified and some of the other programs that will help them be better on the streets. So I really do appreciate that.
Yeah.
Mayor, can I say, Mayor?
Yes.
Real quick. So I just wanted to encourage the rest of you that if you want to do a ride-along to get with Chief Conaherel, because, you know, hand-in-hand with the tax, I think it's important that you see upfront exactly what they're doing, so.
Yes. I have done them in the past. They're interesting, for sure. Sometimes there's nothing, and sometimes it's like, why did I choose this night to do this ride-along? So, yes, our officers definitely, it's not always, it's not about just giving out tickets or, especially nowadays, it's really difficult because they deal with a lot of, as you said, mental health issues and those kinds of things. And that's not always easy. And the lack of resources that we have in the community makes it even more difficult. So I think under extraordinary circumstances, they do a really good job. Does anybody else have anything? No. Okay. All right. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. We just have two items. Does anybody have anything they need to pull off of the consent agenda? No? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved. I have a motion from Commissioner McDonald. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Mayor Protem Wright. I don't see any roll call votes, so all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And motion passes seven zero. Okay. We're going to move on to new business. Consider an Act upon Resolution 2023-50 requesting written approval from the local Government Division of the Department of Finance and Administration. And Evelyn Huff, our Finance Director, has some information for us.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem Commissioners. I am bringing forward our October budget revision. This is on new business because there are a couple revisions on here that affect salaries and benefits. Revision number two is the revision to provide funding for the Assistant City Attorney position. So that covers salaries and benefits. Revision number five is to remove salaries and benefits that were incorrectly added in the 2024 budget. This was for a grant position that should not have been part of the projection, that should have been added only when the grant approval letter was received. So we're just taking that off as part of an error. And then revision number eight is during the budget process, we did not budget anything in the cannabis fund, and those funds were set aside to pay the sign-on bonuses for the new officers, and so we needed to get those budget numbers in there. So I will take any questions on any of those revisions or any of the other ones on this month's document.
Anybody have any questions? Give you a minute to look at it.
Super tiny. We really enjoy our small fonts in finance.
I know. No? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve item five? I have a motion from Commissioner McDonald. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Burnett? A second from Commissioner Burnett. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Kara Melton.
Aye.
Nick Paul.
Aye.
Stephen Burnett.
Aye.
Josh Reardon.
Aye.
Sharon McDonald.
Aye.
Dusty Wright.
Aye.
Susan Payne.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. Okay. We are going to move on to item six. Information for joint collaboration with Alamogordo Public Schools to encourage youth participation in voting. I do want to welcome to our commission meeting the President of the School Board, Judy Rayben, and our Acting Interim Superintendent Pam Renteria. And Stephanie has some information for us.
So I came up here because I have a PowerPoint for y'all. I want to say that this idea came back in 2019. I had approached with Brian if we could do something to help maybe get the youth more engaged in voting. If you recall, just the last mayoral race, I think there was about 3,000 voters of a, of a city of 30,000, so, you know, 1%. So unfortunately, COVID happened, so we weren't able to bring things forward. You know, the poor kids were stuck at home, so we didn't really move forward on even approaching the schools. So I met with Colleen first because I hadn't yet met Pam, and I asked her if this was something that perhaps the school would be interested in. And she said, absolutely, send an email out. So I did send an email out, and then I met with Pam, Deborah, and Anna. I'm not sure who else was in that meeting. We had city staff there, and I approached this idea. So, you know, what I envisioned was that we get our youth engaged young at a high school age. I wanted to go down to middle school, but I wanted to kind of start small with a small, a small scope. Let me see how this works. Haven't done this in a while. So we are going to actually have a voting for the high school kids, an actual full-on experience. Anna is here to help discuss the actual logistics on their side. The city side is to plan the event. So they will actually be voting on the same day that the rest of the city is voting, November 7th. So why collaborate? Well, like I said, low voter turnout. If you look, this comes straight off, there's the source down there. If you look at the demographics of the 2020 election, the 18- to 29-year-old group is the least that have showed up to vote. And I think that's, that we need to start changing that because, you know, we need the young engaged so that change can happen. I'm just going to go through this real quick because I know you guys don't want to hear me talk. So when we approached the schools, we decided, let's come up with some ideas. They approached their student council, and then we, we got back together and started discussing exactly how we can narrow it down. What was feasible on the city side to plan this, to plan it as the event, and then what was feasible at the schools. So, you know, we want to get kids to see that if you show up and you vote, then the one that, the event that you chose is going to actually come to life, and we're going to make it awesome. So these are the three events that are on the ballot. Winter Wonderland at the zoo, scavenger hunt throughout the city. This is to help so that we get more people engaged in our city facilities, our city parks, or a Valentine's Day dance on Main Street. And I spoke with Main Street, with Nolan, and they are fully on board with this. He said that even the retail, the store owners would be willing to do something, maybe put lights up or something in, on their windows. So these are the dates that they're anticipated. There's a little description of what it is. I think they're all cool ideas. I wish I was in school and could vote on some of these. So this is what we plan on doing. The event, I believe, is already being advertised at the high school. Our Community Affairs Department, Hector, will put whatever is chosen by the students, Hector will put the event together. That's what we do. We are trying to make this memorable, exciting, so that next year and the year after that they see, that they get excited about voting, that they look forward to going to the polls. And we will just coordinate to make sure all the protocols for having a school event and the student safeties are like top priorities. So we will coordinate with the schools on that. And then I want to introduce Anna. She can discuss exactly how they're going to run the voting at the schools.
Hello, I'm Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Commissioners. My name is Anna Alday. I'm the CTE Coordinator for the school district. So it was really, really beautiful when Acting City Manager brought this to us, and we are absolutely committed to making sure that the voter turnout continues. It is extremely important for our kids to see the value in voting, and that's why I was very excited to be a part of this. So at the high school, how we plan on doing it, very early in the morning, we will set up for voting, just as everybody else will be. We will start calling the kids down early in the morning. They will go through the cycles. We plan on using our Scantron machines to count their votes, just as they would, and we'll go as long as it takes throughout the day. As soon as we are finished, we will get with City, Acting City Manager, and let her know our results, and hopefully that will, that will encourage our kids to, to vote and see that their vote actually matters.
So I planned on doing this at the school board meeting last time, but, you know, things happened, and I didn't get it on the agenda in time. So we will take it to the school board once on the next meeting, and then also bring it here to let you know just this is what the kids chose, and this is how we're going to do it, and like the participation. And that's all we have. There's no action item. This is already, we have money in our budget to put on any events. It's just part of our special events. But we stand for questions. I just thought this was really something I wanted to bring to you all because I, I've been wanting this for a while, so. Stand for questions.
Anybody have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I think it's an excellent idea.
Me too. Yep. I think it's a good idea. My vote's on the scavenger hunt, but we'll see.
My vote's on the dance.
Touche. That's fair enough.
And the kids will even get the little "I voted" stickers. So, you know, we're going to try and give them the full experience as if they would, if they show up to the courthouse, so.
Fair enough. Anybody else have any questions? Well, I think it's a great idea, and if we can get them engaged now, then when they do become adults, they'll understand the importance of it.
And then we, like I said.
And they'll see that their vote matters.
And we hopefully will see how it works in the high school, and then eventually, hopefully, pull it down to the middle schools as well.
Middle school, yeah. Great. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So we are going to move on to item seven. Consider an Act upon reauthorizing the LEEDA grant to Learn New Mexico for the Inkwell Building. And Stephanie Hernandez, our Acting City Manager, and Michelle Perry, Perry, the CEO of Learn New Mexico, have some information for us. Hello.
Hello. Hello, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Commissioner. Thank you for having me once again. I have been here in front of you more than I have this last month than in my entire life, or these last few months, I guess I should say. So the last time we were here together, I was talking to you about a building that we would use the LEEDA funds to purchase. I'm going to move this because I can't see, Mr. Paul. And the purchase did not go through. We ended up working very hard and trying to come to an agreement. The inspection revealed just too many objections. We had far worse conditions in that building than we anticipated. I, out of my own pocket, paid for two inspections, the building inspection and a sewer inspection. The gas was never able to be hooked back up because once a building is vacant for that long, as you know, the gas has to be, the gas meter has to be removed. Well, when they went to go reinstall it, because you can't finish an inspection without a gas meter, it didn't pass the pressure test. And so we knew immediately we would have to replace gas lines. And not only that, we had to replace a bunch of electricity that was out of date and was arcing inside the panels, lots of issues with the roof, holes, giant holes in the building. So in any case, bottom line, it did not work out. So I worked with Stephanie, and we came up with our second plan, which, in my opinion, is a better plan. So I have a presentation board here, and you can see that this is referring to the Inkwell property. So the Inkwell property was built in 1950. I have Beth here, who's my, yeah, I think she, I think she would agree. 19, it was built at first to be a safe way, long ago. It is there in It is there around the corner from New York. And currently is on the market or was on the market. And in the case that I'm able to buy that, that is what I'm going to propose. The information provided to you by Stephanie in your packet gives you the details of the purchase price and the renovations. We believe I will, of course, get another inspection, do my due diligence on your behalf, and pay for that again to make sure that we're not missing anything. However, we're going in this time with both eyes open. We believe we already know what we're going to find when you have a building that old and in the condition that it is. We have toured it multiple times with multiple contractors. And so we do believe that the remodel price is sufficient. And you'll also notice that the overall ask price is less than what I originally had asked for. So with all of that, we hope to have the Inkwell as the Inkwell Innovation Center. No longer the Almagordo Innovation Center. We feel like it's important to keep the traditional name as it was an office supply store from way back. And so we're going to put efforts into this in creating a coffee bar, again with the co-working space and the small office rental space. You can see there is a draft of the drawings and the renovations that would be done. And so we would have the large conference room, we would have the front area. We would have a display in which we would sell boutique office supplies such as Inkwells, you know, like really fancy Inkwells. And we would have the small conference room, large conference room. We would have multiple office spaces and we would have a patio off to the, I think that's the south side, maybe? Thank you, east, east side. And that patio would be a covered patio for events. And some of the renderings, the drawings, gives you an idea of the themes that we're going for. Bottom line is co-working spaces and ability to have some economic growth and facilitate some of that economic, valuable economic input into the community through the same model as before, trainings and hosting events and doing membership. So I think I covered everything. If there's any questions, please, I stand for them.
I do want to say that separately, I know that Michelle also met with Main Street, but I met separately so that we can talk about how is this going to affect downtown. I think that honestly, this is probably a better plan for us to help bring in more downtown. This is going to, Nolan was 100% excited and on board with having this there because it's an historic building. I was telling Michelle how I have memories of going over there and getting single sheets of paper and thus my love for supplies started. So I think there's a lot of nostalgia in that building and it's downtown. I think it's perfect. So I spoke with Michelle about it and I said, I think this is, I think this is almost a better plan. But because we, the ordinance itself doesn't say the building, but I wanted to bring this in front of commission so that you guys are, you know, well aware of what we're planning, so.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
I've got a couple real quick. What's the square footage difference from this one to, and is that going to affect your?
Right. So it is 3,000 square foot less. However, this building is twice as tall. So when we talk about walls and we talk about paint and we talk about stucco and things like that, and demolition, we have a little extra space to deal with there. But yeah, it is about 3,000 square foot less.
And then you guys, are you going back with the commercial kitchen? Obviously that one had that, but you'll add that in.
We will add that. It has a small area now where they had done some hookups, but it won't do. We're going to demo all that out. But yes, there will be an industrial kitchen and it'll be on the west side. The west side of the building. And on that side of the building, it allows us the space to provide a walk-up coffee window for the public.
Okay, that's all I have.
I have one. Was there any other buildings that you guys had looked at other than?
Oh, yes, 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 yes. This has been the bane of my existence for many, many, many months. I have scoured Almagordo and talked with a lot of people about potential ideas. Sometimes to ask the money is just too much. And then sometimes the condition of the building was just too poor. And so we gave it a lot of thought coming down. And it was really just happenstance that I found out this was about to go on market and we were first at the punch to land on the Inkwell.
Anybody else? Got very quiet here, I'll just say. Okay. Well, if there are no other questions, do I have a motion to approve item seven?
So moved.
I have a motion from Mayor Protem Wright, second from Commissioner McDonald. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Carl Milton.
Aye.
Nick Paul.
Aye.
Stephen Burnett.
Aye.
Josh Roden.
Aye.
Sharon McDonald.
Aye.
Dusty Wright.
Aye.
Susan Payne.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to item eight. Consider an act upon resolution 2023-45 declaring the building or structure on the premises located at 1401 Mountain View to be so ruined, damaged, and dilapidated to be a menace to the public's comfort, health, peace, and safety in ordering its abatement. And we have Paul Bennett, who I do recognize now, who's going to give us some information on that. And it says Chief Adler, but I guess he's not here, right?
No, he's not here.
Okay. Well, then Mr. Bennett, it's on you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem Commissioners, Acting City Manager. So I'm here tonight to just go over this structure at 1401 Mountain View. We believe that it is unfit for human occupancy. And we will show a video later showing why we believe that. So this is the corner that it's on, right there on Mountain View and Washington. And then that's the front of the house that you see right there. Right inside that carport, as soon as you walk in, you get a really strong smell of ammonia and just hard to breathe in that area even. So we're going off of the IPMC definitions, 111 1.3, structures unfit for human occupancy. As you can read there, insanitary. You're going to see that in the video as well. There's imminent danger as well. I was also told, I did not see this myself, but there was a couple of children taken out of this structure on that day that we showed up. So you'll see what we're talking about there. So the timeline was on 10/19, Officer Silva was conducting an investigation at the residence. And then upon what he noticed and observed, he called the Almagordo Fire Department and Code Enforcement. Our Code Enforcement officer arrived and he spoke with Officer Silva and then went out to get an administrative search warrant, which Judge Jensen approved. So he called me up. I met him over there. And we went through at about 10:35. We executed the search warrant, walked through. We had to put on suits, masks, gloves, the whole nine yards before we could enter this residence. As you can see, Code Enforcement also has two additional cases on this property and has received multiple complaints from the neighbors. So once again, these are a couple more of the violation codes that we noticed while we were doing our walkthrough. The accumulation of rubbish, garbage was extensive throughout this residency and very difficult to walk through. The pass, the egress to get out was very unobstructed. So at this next one, this is the body camera for our Code Enforcement officer. So this is a four-minute video that you're going to go through. And it just says, we were walking through the house, he had his camera on. So if at any time, Mayor, you have seen enough, you can just let us know, okay?
You'll know by the expression on my face, trust me. I've already started looking at the pictures.
I'll start that right now and.
Yeah, I'm already grossed out, but whatever.
This has multiple cats. There was over 50 cats just scattered all through that house. Of course, what comes with cats. That was the hallway. We couldn't even get down the hallway.
Do you know how old the kids were that they took out of the home?
I do not know how old they were.
That just anchors me. God.
Is that a lock on the refrigerator?
It is, yeah.
Was it?
Yes. So that was the walkthrough there. And then as you saw, they had the self-contained breathing apparatuses on. Because when we first entered, we only had the N95 and we just couldn't do it. We couldn't take it, so we had to exit the building.
And what was the smell?
Ammonia, but all of the cat.
Ammonia?
Yeah, from the cats. There was over 50 cats in there. And they had been going all over throughout that house. There was, matter of fact, on our suits, up our legs, we had feces when we walked out of the place, just from walking through, so.
So I noticed that the person that owns it, it doesn't appear to be the person that lived there?
That's, I believe that is correct, yes.
It was a rental or something?
Does she know that this is all going on?
Yes, our Code Enforcement officer has gotten a hold of her and let her know.
And I believe that they were going to try and do like, is it a three-day eviction or something? I don't know the proper terms, but Josh has been in contact with the actual owner. And if you recall, I don't remember if I emailed y'all or I called y'all, but this is the house that I contacted you on about a month ago as well. Where CYFD was involved and couldn't get into the house, so.
But they did finally remove the kids. Thank God. No child should have to live like that. That's just.
Is the actual homeowner like acted like she will, after she evicts, that she will get it cleaned up or?
Well, she has 10 days from whatever we decide today and to what she's going to do. But that is our recommendation, that that structure is unfit for human occupancy. And she needs to get it cleaned and go in there and have it just completely cleaned out, as you could see.
Did she indicate her willingness to do that or?
I did not talk to her directly, so I don't have that information right off the top. But yeah, I can't give you that.
What were the prior complaints that we had over there? What were they for?
The same complaints, the smell, the outside of the property. The specific complaints, I don't recall off the top of my head.
So the neighbors were just complaining about the smell?
That's what I was told, yes.
Okay.
What's our course of action if she doesn't do anything?
Then I believe Josh has that in here.
If she doesn't clean it, then we can abate it and we can hire someone to get it cleaned. And then, of course, I get the paperwork and we place a lien on the property. That would be, you know, if she doesn't clean it. Obviously, we would work with the owner to try to, you know, figure something out. You know, if she's making strides, we may extend a little bit. Additionally, I will say too that us declaring this actually will help her in her eviction of them. It'll give her, you know, a little bit more, you know, argument with the judges as to why these people should be evicted. They should expedite the eviction process.
So the previous complaint was for weeds, outdoor storage, and graffiti. That's the one that happened a month ago. That's when I believe that they noticed that CYFD was trying to get a hold of them. I don't remember if there was a card on the outside of the door that Code Enforcement saw. That's correct, right. And then we will hire a contractor if the owner doesn't go in there and do something to clean it up and to make sure.
Is that what we did on Arapahoe Trail?
Yes.
And we hired a contractor?
That's correct, yes.
Do we know an estimate of what it would cost?
No, not at this time.
They would have to tear out all the drywall and everything.
Yeah, I mean, I've been a part of that and it's, cat urine does not go away.
Yeah, yeah. We had to, yeah. I'm speechless. I don't understand the mind of somebody that would allow their children to live like that. I just don't get it.
Is the property owner here tonight?
Not that I know of.
But she is aware that we're.
Yes. Yes, I know that Josh Sides has spoken to the property owner and that he tried to get a hold of the tenant today and the tenant refused to come to the door. I think he will try to meet with the tenant again, but the property owner is not here.
So they're still living in this house?
Are the kids still in the house?
The kids are not in the house. I'm not sure if anybody's living in it. I just got a text message that for Arapahoe, it was about 16,000.
So the structure itself would probably be okay if it wasn't for the strong smell and the disgusting conditions.
Yes, ma'am. From what I observed while I was doing the walkthrough, the structure itself did look like it was intact.
So it would behoove the homeowner to clean it out.
Correct.
And redo it and move on.
I believe so.
So it sounds like they probably would do that, I would think.
I don't know, it costs a lot of money.
It's going to cost a lot of money.
It does cost a lot of money. But is it worth it? I don't know.
It stains the concrete, it gets in the walls, the insulation.
Yeah, I know, it's pretty bad, yeah.
It's not any fun.
The property owner was told that this would be on the agenda today. So they were told that they should show up and speak if. So, they were told that they should show up and speak if they felt that they could, but they're not here.
So, I was wondering if we should give the property owner time to do something with this or? Since it is a property owner, tenant slash, you know what I mean, it's, I'm sure the owner probably didn't know that the condition of the interior of the property.
See, I don't know. I don't know how you could not know that. How is it that bad and you don't know it?
I know, like, my property management, they do an inspection once a year, but it looks like this place has been that way for a while.
Yeah, so there was an ongoing complaint. So, the property owner was told whenever it was, whenever I let you all know this was happening.
That was several months ago, wasn't it?
The property owner, it could have been, like, time goes like that, so I'm not quite sure, but it was recently. It was when school was already in session. The, I think the property owner is waiting on us is what I understand to see what the action is tonight to see. Josh has been in, Josh Sykes has been in communications with the property owner, so it's not a shock. It's definitely not a surprise to the property owner.
So, if we do this, what, you'll secure the building tomorrow? You'll secure the property? Well, tomorrow or whenever, the property will be secured and the tenants will not be allowed to live in there, correct?
That's normally how it would work, yes.
Didn't you say they had 10 days to get it cleaned up?
And then, once we issue this from, to them, then they have 10 days to act. Whether that's getting back, saying an appeal, that they want to come before the Commissioners and talk, or they start to work on the building and clean it up.
So, just to demonstrate that they're starting to work on it?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Well, that's fair enough. Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? That was disgusting. Thank you. That was gross. I'm trying to understand how anybody could live like that and continue to live like that.
There was a house up on Mason, up the street around, this is probably 25 years ago, I worked on that was like this. We had to go in and do the exact same thing.
Yeah, my son bought one on Sunrise like this and I almost look at this and go, I could swear it's the same tenants. I could swear it is. And I mean, I guess there are lots of people that live like that. I don't know, but, but-
More than you know.
Honestly, if I didn't know any better, I'd swear it was the same tenants because it was just unbelievable. Okay, well.
I don't know if I should make this known, but I am aware of this house and I have friends that live on that street, so they've done a lot of investing in their home. So, I don't know if I should not vote.
I know, I wouldn't worry about it.
No, that's not financially interesting. This isn't actually condemning it. This is ordering the abatement, the cleanup.
The abatement and the cleanup, correct.
You don't know them directly, so.
I don't know the people that live in it, but I do know some of the people.
Were they living in that camper that was sitting in the?
Nobody could live in that camper. It was packed full, just like the house was. There was just a little walkway that you could get in to put more stuff in there.
Where were the kids sleeping? Where were everybody?
I only saw one bed the whole time I walked through there. It was all I saw the whole time I walked through.
It's actually gotten worse in the last couple of months.
I just don't, I don't understand how you can allow your children to live like that and sleep at night. I just don't.
Did it have functioning restroom in it?
I never made it to the restroom because once again, I just had the N95 mask, but Josh and them did. The water was running, but as you could tell with the one, I don't think any of us would want to sit on that. But, or shower in that. The kitchen, as you saw, there was no way to, that was not an acting kitchen.
It wasn't a functioning kitchen.
A functioning kitchen, thank you. There was, yeah, it was not. And you saw the refrigerator was locked for who knows why.
It goes back to what we were talking about earlier about mental health issues. It has to be. All right, well.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to consider act upon Resolution 2023-45.
Okay. I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Wright. Do I have a second? A second from Commissioner McDonald. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Carl Melton.
Aye.
Nick Paul.
Aye.
Stephen Burnett.
Aye.
Josh Riden.
Aye.
Sharon McDonald. Dusty Wright.
Aye.
Susan Payne.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Could we take care of that tomorrow, please?
Thank you, Mayor.
Just kidding.
Thanks, Paul, for stepping in.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Is there anything else? Anything?
Just a quick note on Item 9. It says Patria on here.
Yeah, I noticed that too.
On the computer, it has Patria's name as submitted by?
That's funny. Oh, my God, it doesn't say it anywhere here, but I guess, okay.
I noticed. I forgot about it until you brought it up.
Oh, I didn't even notice.
I didn't notice that. Funny. And then if we could go into HR, because I promise you, it'll be like a five minute.
Okay. All right. So, with that, do I have a motion to adjourn into executive closed session in compliance with 10-15-1 to discuss real property, fairgrounds, parking lot, appraisal, and a potential sale?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Wright, a second from Commissioner Riordan. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Carl Melton.
Aye.
Nick Paul.
Aye.
Stephen Burnett.
Aye.
Josh Riden.
Aye.
Sharon McDonald. Dusty Wright.
Aye.
Susan Payne.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0 and we are adjourned. I'm freezing.